Welcome to the Board of Education's December 1st, 2025 Work Session. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Fontana Ridley. Board members, just another reminder that our individual superintendent evaluations must be submitted by December 17th. If you need assistance with the tool or formatting, Teri will be on standby to help, as always. Thank you, Ms. Cote. And also, just a reminder to those in attendance tonight, we are glad you are here. And sometimes in this room, it is hard to hear when there are a lot of people here. So we ask that when the board is having its discussion, that if you need to take a phone call or talk to your friend or whatever, that you step outside the room to do so, because it does make us, make it difficult for us to hear each other during the discussion and for others in attendance to hear. So please be respectful and mindful of that and step outside if, if you need to have a conversation. And with that, are there any requested changes to this meeting agenda? So we have a motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Henderson, all on paper. Any opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Roswick, I think you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving and enjoyed time with family and friends. This time of year always reminds me of how much we have to be grateful for at KCS. As I'm sure you can imagine, our students, educators, and principals are on top of that list. Their dedication and belief in success for every student has made a significant and lasting impact on the students we serve. Just before the break, we received some powerful proof of the impact our schools are making. By now, I'm sure that you've heard, the Tennessee Department of Education has recognized KCS as an advancing district, the state's second highest designation for districts. Those of you who have been with us for a while know how big a step forward that is. Shortly after I stepped into this role, KCS was identified as a district in need of improvement, placing us in the bottom 5% of districts statewide. I told the community at that time that was not acceptable, and we were committed to doing better. And that's exactly what we've done. We've been designated as a satisfactory district for the past two years, but I've told you before, I'll never be satisfied with satisfactory. This year's advancing designation confirms that commitment and highlights that we, what we can achieve when we remain focused on our four core priorities. In addition to our progress as a district, the department recognized 18 KCS schools as reward schools, the state's highest honor for achievement and growth. I also want to especially highlight Lonsdale Elementary, which exited the priority school status. That's a tremendous achievement for the school and for that community, and is a testament to what happens when school leaders, educators, and families refuse to give up on what they know is possible. These are big wins for KCS, but they're not, they are not the result of chance. We have focused our time, attention, and talent on strategies that work, and our kids are better off for it. Milestones like these have positioned us to begin working on the five-year strategic plan that the board approved last year. In that plan, you challenged us to look ahead and explore how technology and innovation could strengthen our teaching and learning. That's exactly what we've been doing. Just two weeks ago, KCS was invited to present at the State Board of Education on the future of AI in education. I was joined by Ms. Lotner and our Chief Technology Officer, Freddie Cox, and together, we shared our current status as a district, as well as our vision for preparing students for an AI-driven future. Our presentation focused on the need to balance safety with innovation. The guardrails we have in place to protect students and staff are critical, and we're committed to maintaining those with intentionality and diligence. We also know that AI is here, and it's already impacting workforce. That means we need to be now thinking about new CTE pathways, programs, and schools to equip students with the critical and creative skills to navigate AI safely and effectively. I'll say this about our presentation, when one of the state board reps, after it was finished, one of the state board reps pulled down their mic and asked how he could enroll his kids in KCS. And actually, we're working on how that can happen too. That, that was just an opportunity to showcase where we hope to go as a district. We're not spending our time catching up anymore, we're now leading the charge. And if you're interested in what's on the horizon with AI, just, we just recorded a podcast with Dr. Vasilios Maroulis, the Director of AI Tennessee Institute and Associate Vice Chancellor at the University of Tennessee. That episode of the Education Blueprint drops on December the 4th, and I encourage you to check it out. Last but certainly not least, winter break is just around the corner. Schools will be closed from Monday, December the 22nd through Friday, January the 2nd. I want to encourage our staff and families to enjoy the break, and I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. We look forward to returning on Monday, January 5th, energized for the second semester. Madam Chair, that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Roswick. And next up, I think we have our first quarterly threat report. Dr. Adams, is this you?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, members of the board. As Ms. Lotner shared last month, our first quarter ran from August 1st through October 31st of 2025. During that time, we recorded 11 threats that met the qualifications for public reporting under state law. I'd like to reiterate that our school safety, our school safety department takes every threat seriously. We investigate every tip and every concern we receive, not just limited to those that meet the parameters Ms. Lotner shared last month. Anytime a threat is reported, they are rapidly evaluated and dealt with swiftly. We also make every effort to over-communicate. In the last quarter alone, we recorded over 35 parent square messages from schools to families, notifying them of incidents or concerns on or near our campuses. Like the 11 threats we are porting on tonight, these incidents were rapidly evaluated, vetted, and swiftly dealt with to keep our campuses safe and secure. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. Legislative update, Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Legislative update tonight is in regard to our Tennessee School Board Association Annual Convention that we had in mid-November. So wanted to share a short update on legislative information that was shared with board members from across the state. Each year at the convention, the present board members may participate in the delegate assembly to consider resolutions and position statements that may be adopted by the association. This year, no new position statements were presented for consideration, but there were 16 resolutions submitted for the assembly's consideration. One of them was a resolution to express appreciation for the outgoing TSBA Board of Directors President, and the remaining 15 covered topics included drones, student searches, parental notification requirements, PECA, school nurses, allowing board members to serve as bus drivers, the number of legislative regulations for public schools, higher education fee discounts for all system employees, funding for special education preschool students in TESA formula, the number of annual teacher evaluations, evaluation flexibility for high-performing educators, flexibility for recess ti, school resource, recess time, the creative, I'm sorry, the Creating High Achieving Opportunities in Competitive Education Act, free public education for all students, and opposition to House Bill 0793 and Senate Bill 0836. The TSBA recommended some of the resolutions, but took no position on the resolutions regarding board members to serve as bus drivers, funding for special education preschool in TESA, greater flexibility with school resource time, free public education for all students, in opposition to House Bill 793. The association did not recommend resolutions regarding teacher evaluations and the Creating High Achieving Opportunities in Competitive Education Act. Votes on each of the proposed resolutions were taken during the assembly, and a majority of the resolutions were adopted. However, the resolutions regarding teacher evaluations and recess were not adopted. The resolution regarding PECA was deferred until next year, and the assembly chose not to take action on the resolutions regarding a free public education for all in opposition to HB 793. That concludes the legislative update. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. We also have a Strategic Plan Committee update. And the Strategic Plan Committee met on Monday, November 10th to continue our work on aligning the superintendent evaluation tool with our new five-year strategic plan. As you know, this year's evaluation will be based on the 2024-2025 information, so we are still using last year's evaluation model. The committee has tasked staff with compiling information and updates, and will be meeting again next week on Monday, December 8th, at 1:00 PM in the boardroom to hopefully finalize the recommendation for the board to consider in January. And so with that, we will move into our discussion of our December 4th agenda. Let me find it, sorry. All right, so any questions or comments on items 5A or B? Item C, 1 or 2? 3 or 4? 5 or 6? Or item 7? Moving on to 6, board policies, A or B? C or D? E or F? Or G? Moving to grant, 7, A or B? C or D? E or F? G or H? Contracts, 8A? Regular agenda items, 9A? 9B? Or C? All right, well, that was squeaky. So moving on to the last item, which is legislative priorities. Let me shuffle through my papers, being sorry, patient. So, and everybody should have the document, I believe, this was attached to the agenda as well, at your desk, that was attached to the agenda. And I'm not sure, I, first, I'd like to kind of get a feel for how everybody wants to move forward on Thursday. I think that the first two listed on here, it appeared as if everybody were in agreement on. And, and then the others that were discussed are on the second page. And, you know, we can, Thursday, we can vote to add them one at a time. We can go through them tonight. You know, if anybody has language that they would like to see changed in any of them. And I'm not really sure what the easiest way to proceed would be. If anybody has any preferences, this would be a great time to, Ms. Templeton?
I, I think it would be helpful to have a conversation about, there are several, I think there are three here, and then I submitted some as well. And I also made some adjustments to the formatting based on a conversation that we had last month that I think we should probably discuss as well. Just thinking through, I believe it was Mr. Triplett that had, just thought it would be helpful to bucket things a little bit differently, to make it easier to navigate. So I think that would be worth having a conversation to. I took a stab at it, Mr. Triplett. You can give us your input on whether or not that would work. But I, I think working through the different submissions would be helpful.
Ms. Bight?
Thank you. Um, I agree with Ms. Templeton. So I, I had brought some other ones, and I have my notes from last month. The, the local control one that I brought, which is our extra one, I kind of envisioned as, because some of my asks, like the unfunded mandates, number 6, and academic and retention decisions, like some of the things that were important to me was about the local control and about the funding and things like that. So in my mind, this would be in place, kind of of this header. I tried to kind of put it together and make local control and classroom impact kind of all one, instead of two separate ones. And to just kind of, I felt like it spoke a little bit more to like what we were all talking about in carrying through all of these. But as far as like the format, in my mind, I would think that we would get the template set. And then I think in previous years, we've gone through and voted on each individual one. I would be okay with that. That seems reasonable. And then also, these other two, number 6, I don't know if we want to wait, and I can talk about these when we get down there, or what you would prefer.
So it kind of sounds like we want to go through one at a time, right? Do we want to just start with one and work our way down?
Mm-hmm.
Would that work for everybody? Okay. Let's do that. So let's start with number one on this second page, which is funding for preschool students in the TESA formula. Ms. Bight?
I think that this one is really important, and it seemed like there wasn't enough movement last year, so would be good to keep it. But if there, if we get to a point where we're going over one page, then we could kind of go from there.
Anyone else? And I would agree with it being important, so I would definitely want to keep that on there. And item 2, ability to conduct lotteries for educational purposes. This is the cakewalk, this is the cakewalk, Gary, the cakewalk. Yeah, but you know, I'm sure PTAs would love to have a good cakewalk, so. Is anyone opposed to cakewalks? Okay, great. We'll, we'll keep that one. Perfect. All right. Number 3, academic, academic and retention decisions. Ms. Bight?
So sorry. Um, obviously, I feel really passionately about this one. I think that this was combined really well and speaks to the idea of like, the only thing is maybe like a little typo in there, but, but that, obviously, like, the third grade retention, they've done a lot of work in making sure that it's actually doing good, but that realistically, they're not funding the K through 2, the more intervention-type strategies. So I think that this is good, but if other people have opinions, I'm open to them.
So would this be one that we could put under local control with, or?
Um, that's a tough one, because I, yes, kind of, except I do have the ask for the funding for the K through 2. That's only kind of the...
Mr. Triplett?
Dr. Isaac, is this something we don't have funding for, we need funding for? I mean, we always take more funds, right? I don't know if we'd ever tell them no, but is this something, an ask you would want?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Triplett. I like, I like more funding, it's always good. But currently, the way they do that is they send us funds for tutoring, and then we can use those how we need to, which typically, right now, goes to our 3rd and 4th graders to meet the, so they can move on to the 4th grade and not be retained. So we currently, if you all remember back to when we had ESTRA funds and all those, we used some of those funds to actually extend that down to lower grades. And now, almost all of those state funds, because ESTRA were federal funds, go just to the 3rd and 4th grade. So we offer a few lower-grade classes for summer, but we currently do not receive funding. To answer your question a long way, no. We currently do not receive funding for those lower grades. But they, the state would probably tell us, they don't force us to use it for 3rd and 4th, but that's where we have to in order to have those kids move forward.
Ms. Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to see this kept on its own because of that piece of asking for that funding for that lower-grade intervention. I think a few years ago, I think that was kind of the missing link a few years ago, so I would love to see that kept as is.
Anyone else? All right, moving on to teacher evaluation. Is everybody good with that? All right. And number 5, stabilize federal funding. Ms. Bight?
I'll just talk on it since I was the one that brought it. Um, yeah, this was kind of in line with the resolution that I brought back at the beginning of the school year, or sometime in the summer, somewhere around there. In that, you know, that kind of like was a big upheaval for us. I know some of the smaller districts maybe lost 150,000, or were frozen 150,000, but for us, you know, the 3.4 million plus, the possibility of it being more than that is really scary to me, and that upset a lot of families in that kind of like push-pull, families, educators, and kind of like the whole thing. And for a system as big as we are, that's where I would just, why I like asking for this, and the General Assembly did offer it, so.
Anyone else? Ms. Templeton?
Yeah, I just want to throw support for that stabilization. There, I still get emails asking, hey, what's the status on my job for next year? And to be able to say that our state legislature's got you, it's going to be okay. It, it puts people at ease. I don't believe that we will be in the same situation again, but it's nice to know that there's a safeguard in the unfortunate circumstances.
Anyone else? All right, item 6. Ms. Bight?
I'm sorry. Yeah, you know, last month, some of the things that I had brought up about the checking immigration status of students and the potential for putting that on the school system, and that, you know, we don't have a department that does that, we don't currently do that. And some of the issues with, you know, is that then requiring us to take social security numbers, and what security risks are those? And the data that we would be holding, that we would have to kind of like bolster in, in that regard, plus having the people power to do this, and all of the infrastructure that it would do to be able to take on a heavy lift like this. Besides that, it would really get in the way of kind of like our core mission of like actually just educating kids in Knox County. But I had rewritten one to kind of include maybe, maybe a little bit from Ms. Templeton's in number 8, which I really appreciated it as well. So this one that's immigration status mandates reads, "The Knox County Board of Education urges the General Assembly to oppose any proposals requiring school districts to collect or monitor student immigration status as they create legal risks, add administrative burdens, and distract from teaching and learning. The Board affirms the Tennessee Constitution and the Supreme Court rulings guaranteeing a free public education for all children in Tennessee, and opposes any measure that excludes or seeks to exclude any child from our schools. Discrimination has no place in public education, and strong communities depend on educating every child." And I do think that that aligns with, you know, our four pillars pretty well, which I tried to kind of include in that, but also know it's pretty wordy. So then I have this other one, that's just a one-sentence, that's support for education for all children, which simply reads, "The Knox County Board of Education opposes any proposal that seeks to exclude any child from a free public education in Tennessee." So a little less wordy, kind of same sentiment. And I'm open to whatever changes. I like group work.
Dr. Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I like and support the statements that have been made. I think that the question I have is 6 and 8 seem to be so closely related, they're the same thing. So I think if we just had one statement as short as possible that would mention, that would, that would speak to that. But, because I think the two of them are so closely related, or possibly the same thing.
And Mr. Triplett?
Yeah, a couple things. One, on 6, it says, say, unfunded. I think I mentioned this when we talked about these last time. You know, based on that wording, if they funded it, you'd be okay with it. That's a little weird, so I think we would want to get rid of that, that wording.
Yeah, and the, in the two that I brought, it doesn't say unfunded.
Yeah, I saw that. But I, I would take 6, 8, and both of these sheets, and just combine them with that first immigration status mandates. I feel like it covers all that under one, one statement. I, I agree with Dr. Butler, they are, they sound very similar. So if you eliminate 6 and 8 and combine them, how you want to talk about it, and, and put it all under that one, it would cover all of it.
I'm going to get Ms. Fontana Ridley first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't care to read a lot, I like to read a lot. I think the shorter the piece leaves it open for a lot of interpretation. I think the de, the details in your suggestion are important, and I think that they need... I think the details in your suggestion are important, and I think that they need to stay in there. We don't need any kind of misconception about what we mean. So I, I'm okay with the longer one.
Ms. Templeton?
It seems we were thinking similarly. So, yes, we actually have one, two, three, four, five discussing immigration here and discussing what is currently, but actually, a lot of these wonderful people are here to discuss tonight. So I took out of our conversation this past month, it is December, so November, to the unfunded mandate conversation. Mr. Triplett and I, on your highlighted sheet, this is the one I'm referring, referencing here, and I'm gonna get back to the immigration question, but I'm gonna start on the highlighted sheet. You can see under local control, I added the mandate there. That was something that we had talked about possibly moving into that bucket and therefore cleaning up what you were just asking for, to remove the unfunded mandate portion of it. So I rewrote mine as well. So I think number eight is the one that I wrote initially, but I've adjusted it based on our previous conversation, separated out the unfunded mandate part and put that under local control and cleaned up and shortened the support for educational opportunities, which is highlighted here on the second page that you have. Does that make sense? Okay. So number eight is no longer because I've separated it out per discussion. And so I'm throwing that into the mix while we are having this conversation because Reverend Butler makes a valid point, we only need one. So what does that look like and how does this wording happen? And where does everybody feel most comfortable? So, yeah, we've got the super-short one sentence by Ms. Byke, we have a longer one by Ms. Byke, and then we've got another one. So I think looking at the differences between those is worth a conversation.
Dr. Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The immigration status mandate one, I think, Mr. Triplett mentioned that one. I think that has the entities there. I would not want to call it immigration status mandate. I would want to call it education for all children or something like that, which we're saying what we want and not what we don't want. I've always thought it was the best way to do that. And the other thing is, I'm not sure if I would leave the last sentence in there because you said what needs to be said. I think when we start talking about discrimination, this is a form of discrimination, but it's not the only form. And I think so, so I think the main, the main things that I would want to see are in those, in those first parts, I think those first couple sentences, first three sentences, yeah. That's just my thought.
All right. So we have, so you're saying eight, this, this will kind of replace number eight. So we're taking eight off, off the list, right? So Ms., Ms. Templeton? Are you, are you, so, so in place of number eight, is it on the, are you replacing it with? So you're replacing it with the first paragraph on the second page? Okay. So, so this would be pretty, another version of number six, basically, right? Or six in her?
So between these two?
Yes, so we have your short one.
Oh, so for one, okay.
And then we have your long one.
Uh huh.
And then we have the top one.
Okay. Okay.
And those are all three basically the same priority, right? Or different versions of the same priority? Is that correct? Those three? Okay.
Is that put six and eight together?
Yes.
Mr. Triplett?
I would just think about your title simply from the standpoint of education opportunities. I mean, I think we know exactly where we're at, but education for all children is, I think, the thing we're talking about. And the challenge you have with these state reps is they get a million different things. What we need frankly is a title that clearly states what they want, because they may, they, hopefully, they'll read the whole thing, but in reality, what's gonna be, they're gonna glance at is that title, you know? So I think the title's gotta be clear enough, because they'll have a million of these from a million different people who have various opinions on things. We just gotta have a title that's clear about what we want, so they can almost sum it up. They know everything really that's in it. I know there's some details that matter and, and Ms. Fontana Ridley, you would read them all, but they won't always, and some of them will, but what we want them to remember is just the title. So whatever title we put there is what they'll kind of hang on to.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, or if they're trying to reference back and find something, they're gonna need to find it quickly. So I would definitely agree with that statement on the title of that priority. Dr. Butler?
I like to offer free education for all students.
So, Ms. Byke, did you have something?
Reverend Butler, all, all students or all children? Do you have a reference? I, I don't know. Okay.
Well, we do have 18-year-old students too, so I can see that. Okay, so Thursday, we will have to have proposed language in one form, I think, submitted to vote on. Does everybody kind of, I mean, feel like we're in a good place here for that? Ms. Templeton, Ms. Byke, or do one of you want to take a stab at it based on the discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're really close. Ms. Templeton, do you have any ideas of how to meld these together or what? Or do we want to go through and like circle the strong elements and put those together?
I like yours. I mean, Mr., I mean Reverend Butler asked to take off the discrimination line. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I marked that out.
And then to retitle. And I'm comfortable with yours.
Or you could each, you could each bring a separate version.
Yeah, I just don't want to run over you.
I know, but I'd rather not. I mean...
I'm just thinking in terms of being efficient on, on Thursday.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, no, absolutely.
Same.
Yeah. I agree. I'm comfortable with yours. Do we, is there any other discussion, things anybody wants to change? Questions?
I don't think so.
Okay.
So that's it, six and eight, basically, the only two things we're gonna adjust. Everything else is basically staying the same?
We haven't, we haven't discussed number seven, yeah.
And we're gonna keep this format. I like this format, this look with the two at the top. Yeah, I do like the layout. I don't know who put that together, but...
But my only one was trying to combine them. I don't know how, if we want to talk about that for the header.
I mean, I'm not real, real passionate about it, but I like the two separate because they're distinct, but again, not real passionate about it. Yeah, the decision whether to combine those two, I like the format she was talking about. She created one that you could sort of combine them, but I like the two separate.
I, I like this format and then adding the priorities where we left it blank.
At the bottom.
Individually. Does that make sense?
Yes, I did have a change that I would like to see made under local control, and that's the unfunded mandate part, is just the request that the, when they pass legislation, that it is not passed with an unfunded mandate, that it comes with funding.
And that's highlighted on this first page, right?
And that's highlighted on the front page. Highlight number one.
I definitely agree with that.
Is a very basic, if, if you're gonna pass something, we would really love you to fund it too.
Yeah, because that goes with the like, the third grade retention stuff, so.
Right.
So adding the, the sentence you highlighted here. Under local control on this page that was attached to the agenda. Correct?
Correct. Right, that, that was before it was in neat columns, but I think it's important, I think it's important to request funding.
Oh, I bet Ms. Fontana could make it look pretty. She, she, she's, she has skills in that department. Yes.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I actually was not going to jump in, but I do have a question, since you said my name. So I have two quick questions from a staff standpoint to make sure we capture everything that you all want to see turned around for Thursday. So on the conversation regarding unfunded mandate under local control on the front page, do you want to keep the reference to unfunded mandates under classroom impact? So you have that language in the second column on the first page, so I think that's something we would need to know, just in terms of the bring-back for Thursday. And I can pause on that question, but I do just want to make sure that Terry and I also captured exactly what was going to change and how you want to see that on Thursday for those other three pieces of language.
Yeah, I don't know that we need it in both of those columns, or maybe we do, I don't know. Yeah, I know. That thought did cross my mind, too. Yeah. So... Yeah, I, yeah, I, I tend to agree with Mr. Triplett. I do, I mean, I don't think we need them in both places. And it is there at the top in the other, in the other column. But we can have two templates. Do you want to bring two?
We could do an A, a B, a C for templates, and we'll do numbers for priorities. How about that?
If you can switch the language around.
We could do that.
And have, and just an A and B on that. And then we'll keep that, and then we'll add the priorities that we have discussed here on this page, so much stuff, on this page. And we will have some new proposed language that combines six and eight, is that correct? All right. So is there any more discussion regarding that item? Okay. Number seven, support for community schools. And I think, I know you're on the Community School Committee with United Way. Ms. Templeton, did you want to speak to that?
I am. I think that it is important to applaud our legislators when they do something that's really great. And this is an opportunity to support a bill that is coming through down the pike right now in support of community schools. And it would give community schools, it would give school districts across the state the opportunity to have community schools, which is something that we partner with United Way on. And Senator Briggs is, has brought this to the table, and it is Senate Bill 0364. We discussed it last month. I'd sent the deck to Ms. Cotney, I believe she sent that out. Hopefully, Ms. Henderson, that answered your questions and, yeah, so this is in support of a bill that's coming through that would do a lot of really great work and help fund nonprofits and school systems to work together to help students.
All right. So any more discussion on that item?
Should we be more specific since there is a bill there and list the bill number? I mean, you know, part of the deal is, one of the challenges to think of our legislative priorities have always been being specific on what we want to see, and if there's a specific bill we want them to support, should we put it in there?
That is certainly up for discussion. The, the title's called Community School Support in Tennessee, and the name of the bill is the Tennessee Community Schools Act. So there's some synergy there. I'm, I'm open to putting that in there if you want to.
Or you can just add support for the Community Schools Act.
Sure. You're fine with that.
If you wanted to do that. All right. So I guess we are done with, with that? Everybody feel like we're in a good place? Anybody have anything else they want to add? Any concerns, questions? Now's the time. All right. Moving on to public forum. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have several public forum speakers tonight, so would ask everybody just please be courteous to the speaker that's at the podium. When you do come up, you will have three minutes. Please say your name and your county of residence before you start. And we'll start with number one on the list, Candace Boyd. Candace, if you could, just state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Candace Boyd. I live in District Two. I'm a retired primary school teacher. I urge you to vote yes on a legislative priority opposing HB 793 and to oppose any other legislation seeking to deny children a tuition-free education. I taught first, second, and third grade for 28 years. In all those years, I never met a teacher or an administrator who did not believe every child has a right to a free public education. That's what public schools are about, educating children regardless of race, background, family history, health condition, whatever. I see it as a moral imperative that public schools stay that way. That is why I urge you to vote yes on the legislative priority which opposes HB 793 and to oppose any other legislation that seeks to deny any child a tuition-free education.
Thank you, Candace. Next is Chris Bice. Chris, please state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
I'm Chris Bice. I'm a Knox County resident. I live on Garden Drive in Fountain City. Both my kids were educated in Knox County School. My stepson educated in Austin East, graduate, and my daughter at Central High School in Fountain City. And I participated in the Principal for a Day at Fountain City Elementary School program last year and hope to do that in the future. So Alex Haley said, "Find the good and praise it." And so I want to praise the language coming from Ms. Byke to have a resolution from this body that speaks to our legislature, that says, "Public education is for all our children." I see it as a moral issue. The scripture says, "Welcome the stranger, for by so doing you are entertaining angels unaware." So I think it's a blessing to welcome everyone into our schools. I think it enriches us all. When I was in high school, I learned Spanish, but I didn't have anyone to help me practice that language. And so children in this day and age have it much better than in my day. So I encourage you to speak out and lead the charge. As you were saying earlier about leading and educational excellence, I encourage you to lead the charge for public education for all our kids. to lead the charge for public education for all our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next is Michael O'Malley. And Michael, if you could, just state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Thanks, sorry, I was in the other room. Michael O'Malley, Knox County. I'm also a teacher at Carter High School and parent of two KCS students. And like I'm sure many others, I'm here to encourage all the past priorities that would tell the legislature that Knox County Schools does not want the discriminatory bill that would exclude undocumented children from our schools. I'm encouraged to see that it looks like there's broad support on the board for that priority. So hopefully, I'm preaching to the choir here, but hopefully also choir doesn't mind a little preaching, so here we go, I guess. So first, I want to co-sign what others have brought, that our schools should be safe in welcoming places for all residents of Knox County, not just those who fit into certain categories. But the main thing I'd like to talk about is just to call attention to some of the logistical concerns presented by the bill that perhaps our legislators aren't aware of. And in, at least in the original language for the legislative priorities, I realize they may change, but it talks about the administrative burden of this task. So, I mean, maybe it goes without saying, but let's, let's talk about what this can actually require of our schools to do what this prospective bill asks us to do. I think a lot of us are probably thinking of screening students who are currently enrolling, and that's definitely a burden, but that kind of is skipping a step, which is, what are we going to do with the 60,000 students who are already enrolled in Knox County Schools? If we are barring undocumented immigrants from this, from our schools, won't we have to comb through all of those students' records themselves? So in order to do that, every school in the district will have to get every single enrolled student to bring documentation to prove their lawful residence in the United States. I don't know if you guys have ever tried, but I have tried to get students to bring documents to school, and it's, it's dicey, to say, to say the least. I teach at Carter High School where there's around 700 students. Getting 700 students to bring not just a field trip permission slip form, which is already a, you know, a difficult prospect, but official government documentation, I mean, that's a nightmare. And, I mean, we're one of the smaller high schools. You could go up to 2,000 students at somewhere like Farragut or Bearden. You know, the mind boggles. After that, every school in the district is going to have to evaluate those documents that are brought in, and that's not a simple task. I mean, a student brought in to the United States, or born into the United States would have different documentation than a student with a temporary protected status, who would have different documents than a student whose family is awaiting a court hearing for an asylum claim, and those documents would be different from students with a refugee status, and there are all sorts of various permutations of that. And our office staff, and we're talking about at a school level, just a handful of people, sometimes one or two people, depending on the size of the school, they would have to sort through each and every one. You know, we've been to the DMV, right? You know, you have to bring documents there, and that, that's not very fun, but let's imagine at Carter High School, like, 700 students lined up at a DMV sort of situation, or 2,000 students at, you know, one of our bigger schools. And then after that, what about when we finally get to students who haven't the required documents? Who's going to be telling them that they can't come back to school? Who's going to come to the classrooms and take them out and never let them back in again? So that's time, right?
Thank you, Michael.
Please support it.
Next is Emma Takhvorian. Please state your name and county of residence.
Hi, my name is Emma Takhvorian, and I live in District Two. I'm a proud second-generation citizen, my father having immigrated from Turkey. I'm also a school counselor in my second year with Knox County. Previously, I was a teacher for 18 years in both public and private schools. I currently work in a fantastic elementary school in District Two with a large and growing English Language Learner, or ELL, population. Every year, our ELL teachers ask their fourth and fifth graders what they want to be when they grow up. This year, for the first time ever, not one student had a dream for their future, not one. This is not a coincidence. It is a direct result of what they, their families, and friends are seeing and experiencing these past few years. As a school counselor, I personally worked with students who are missing school because they are afraid of coming home and finding their family members disappeared. I have students move to a new school because one of their parents was taken during their required check-in, and their other parent has their own required check-in coming up and wants to be sure their children are living with another family in case they get taken as well. I also have families afraid to attend school events because they do not know if ICE will be nearby. I know these are not things that a local school board can fix or has any control over, but what the school board does have control over is ensuring these students know that just like their teachers and schools support them, those in the county with the highest level of educational power, their school boards support them as well. I mentioned earlier that I'm a second-generation American. It was not until my dad became a U.S. citizen that he used his real Armenian last name for the first time in his entire life. Growing up in Turkey, there was a real fear that to speak his first language or use his real last name in public would lead to discrimination or violence. Even though it is more accepted to acknowledge Armenian heritage in Turkey, he still feels this fear when we visit family there now. I bring this up because children and families feel the same fear here, now, in the United States. People are afraid to leave their homes, go to school, or use their native language in public. It might feel at times that there's little we can do when so many feel scared and unsafe, but there is. A legislative priority and resolution that takes a firm stance against Tennessee HB 793 and similar bills that permit discrimination against children will demonstrate our values and uphold our vision to be the cornerstone of education in Knox County. It will also show all Knox County students that when their leaders say they have a goal to maintain safe, secure learning environments, they mean that for all children. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Please state your name and county of residence.
My name is Annabelle Henley, and I live in Knox County. I feel like I know each of you fairly well from watching your campaigns and hearing you speak. And I know despite all political differences, you are all here because you want what's best for children, and that's the number-one priority for each of you. And you have an opportunity to make sure all children are a priority despite how they got here or who their parents are. And I hope and pray that all of you will vote to make the right to an education a priority for every child. It's a slippery slope to start determining access to education for a child based on the choices of the parents. You are all here for such a time as this to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Annabelle. Aubrey Stark. Leslie Stark will be next. Aubrey, if you could, just state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Aubrey Stark. I'm 14 years old, Knox County resident.
Thank you for the microphone. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Aubrey Stark. I'm 14 years old, Knox County resident, and here to ask you to take a public stand against this bill that will block some children from attending their public school based on their immigration status. This bill affects real kids. I know some of my closest friends I met in Hispanic Alliance. We worked together and shared stories and food and music. They have made my life better and make our schools better. I can't imagine my classroom without my friends. This bill tells some of my friends that they do not belong, that they are, that they are not worthy of education. That breaks my heart. No kid should ever have to worry that the state might decide they are not allowed to learn. Public school is supposed to be the place where every child is welcomed and given a chance to learn and grow. When we take that away from any child, we hurt us all. We lose their talents, their kindness, and their hard work, and the richness they bring to our community. I'm asking you, the Knox County School Board, to stand up for all students in Knox County. Please say clearly that our district believes that every child deserves safety, dignity, and a seat in the classroom. We are stronger as a learning community when every kid is allowed to learn. Please help protect that. Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. Leslie Stark. Next will be Lisa Plautchen. If you could, please state your name and county of residence.
Hi, my name is Leslie Stark, and I live in Knox County in North Knoxville, and I'm a parent of a ninth grader who just spoke for you guys. I'm here to ask the board to pass a legislative priority on December 4th that affirms that Knox County will continue to educate all children. Following this bill will cause real and lasting harm to kids in our community. It creates fear, fear in families are already living with uncertainty, fear in children who should never have to wonder if they're allowed to go to school. When parents are scared to send their kids to school and kids are scared to show up, learning becomes impossible. No child can thrive under that kind of pressure. We know early years of education are critical. This is when kids carry, carry language, social skills, and the foundation of lifelong learning. For many children, early intervention services such as speech, reading support, and behavioral help make a difference between struggling for years and truly succeeding. If we block children from school because of their immigration status, we're denying them opportunities they'll never get back. This bill doesn't protect anyone. It harms our kids and our classrooms and the fabric of our community. Passing this priority shows Knox County believes every child deserves to learn without fear. Our schools are stronger when all children are welcome and feel safe to learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Next is Lisa Plautchen. Beth Carol Hunley will be next. Please state your name and county of residence.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Plautchen. I live in Knox County, District Five. I'm here tonight as a parent of three Knox County Schools students and as a former KCS employee who worked in special education. I strongly urge you to pass a clear legislative priority reaffirming the district's commitment to educating all students. My children have attended Knox County Schools from kindergarten through high school, and two are still enrolled. As a parent, I have seen firsthand how diversity strengthens our classrooms. When students learn alongside peers with different backgrounds and perspectives, they gain critical thinking skills, empathy, and a broader understanding of the world. HB 793 threatens that foundation. Creating a system of exclusion that denies children access to public education, they are guaranteed by the Constitution. During my time working for KCS, I supported high school students with disabilities across nine schools, helping them explore careers, build job skills, and learn how to effectively advocate for themselves. My students face challenges every day, but when they connected potential opportunities with their future, there was a spark of hope and excitement. Not once did I wonder whether they were documented, but rather, how can I help prepare each of them for success after KCS and to positively contribute to our community? Your recent strategic plan centers on ensuring every student is future-ready. Adopting a clear legislative priority affirming this right communicates to students, families, educators, and our community that you are living this mission. I'm concerned about the additional barriers new documentation requirements will bring. These changes will disproportionately impact students with disabilities, students of color, and low-income families, families who already navigate more obstacles than many of us can imagine. We should not add more, nor should we add burdens to our already taxed school administrative staff who will bear the brunt of enforcement. Strong public schools mean strong communities. An educated population fuels a stable workforce, a healthy economy, and safer neighborhoods. Education doesn't just transform individual lives, it strengthens the entire community. Passing a clear legislative priority is a proactive step that reflects who we are and what we believe. HB 793 will directly impact our schools, our staff, our families, and most importantly, our children. Now is the time to stand up for students, for the Constitution and rule of law, and for the future of Knox County. I respectfully urge you to pass a legislative priority reaffirming education for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Beth Carol, I'm sorry, Beth Carol Hunley. Please state your name and county of residence.
Hello, I'm Beth Carol Hunley. Can you all hear me? A sec. I'm Beth Carol Hunley. I live at 721, 7120 Wellington Drive, 37919. I'm District Four. I work with Alliance for Community Transformation Act as an advisor, and also with Fish Hospitality Pantries as a Vice President and Director of the Community Programs. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, this afternoon evening. I'm a Tennesseean by birth. I was, I was, grew up here in Knoxville, I went to school here. And I'm here in support of free education for all children, so that all children can learn and develop their potential. All of us were born into a world of essential needs, the need for food, shelter, education, and healthcare. As we develop, we're guided by the values in the community surrounding us, by our families, teachers, our churches, which help us to respond to the needs of all. In ACT and in FISH, the organizations I work with, the work we do is for the common good. Our underpinning values include diversity and inclusion and welcome to all, based on the core belief in the dignity of every person. With that dignity, we have certain rights. Actually, the belief that every person is created with dignity is core to all our faith traditions, Christianity, Catholic, or Protestant, Judaism, and Islam. We are taught by our religions that the breath of our Creator is in every child, every one of us. That is true for each child, whether they were born here or traveled from another place. I know many immigrant families here. I know their stories. I know about the hardships they faced to get here. I know about the heartbreak of leaving their homes and often other family members behind. I know some of the reasons they were forced to leave. I know about the droughts, the floods, the fires, the storms, and hurricanes in their countries of origin that have made it impossible to continue to live in their homeland. I know about the dry corridors in their countries where rivers have dried up and farming is no longer possible to sustain their families. And I know about the resulting civil unrest and violence in the impoverished cities where they are forced to move and then to escape in order to survive. I also know of the values they bring with them, their love for their families, I know of their deep faith and their strong work ethic. I know of their courage and their desire to contribute to this country. I've been inspired by all of that, and they are people whose presence among us creates many benefits. So it seems like the proposal for not allowing undocumented children to enjoy the opportunity for a free and equal education is a step backward, and it goes against our deepest beliefs as Americans that we've been trying to live into for all these many years. Our vision is stated in our Declaration of Independence. Quote, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life for liberty and the pursuit of happiness." So we've been traveling on the right path, and we must not turn back now. The writer and civil activist James Baldwin put it this way, one, just two more. "The children are always ours, every single one of them, all over the globe, and I'm beginning to suspect that whoever is incapable of recognizing this may be incapable of morality."
Thank you, Beth. That's three minutes.
Thank you. And what kind of people do we want to be?
Thank you, Beth. Next is Megan Barrelay Fogarty. Sorry if I messed that up.
That was pretty good. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Megan Barrelay Fogarty. I'm Knox County resident, the parent of both a current KCS student and a KCS graduate, and I work as Director of Youth and Family Engagement at Centro Espanol de East Tennessee. As a parent and in my role working with immigrant families over the past decade, I have seen how children thrive when they're given opportunities to learn in environments where they feel a sense of trust and belonging. Unfortunately, I have also witnessed the withdrawal and apathy that develops in youth who are denied opportunities and agency over their own futures. The state legislature will likely soon be considering a bill that could force districts to screen all children for eligibility based on immigration status and attempt to charge tuition or deny access to students that cannot prove that eligibility. I urge this board to adopt a legislative priority that emphatically opposes this bill and upholds the principle of a free, quality education for every child. The proposed bill is discriminatory and it's unconstitutional. In 1982, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled in Poirier v. Doe that schools cannot deny public K-12 education to children based on K-12 education to children based on their immigration status. A state law which forces our district to enforce a clearly unconstitutional policy is a fiscal and legal mistake that could expose Knox County to expensive and unwinnable litigation. The proposed screening of children for eligibility is also an administrative nightmare and a waste of taxpayer money. It weaponizes our schools, transforming educators into immigration agents, breeding fear and mistrust among the families, the very families they and you are sworn to serve. Our schools are meant to be sanctuaries for learning. When we introduce fear, we damage the learning environment for all students. When we deny an education to any child, we create an undereducated and marginalized class of youth who will never be able to realize their potential for our region. Education is not a zero-sum game. We do not elevate one child by pushing another into the shadows. We strengthen our entire community when we ensure every student has the preparation to be a fully integrated and productive member of society. It is time to be on the right side of history. I urge the Knox County Board of Education to adopt a legislative priority that explicitly states that you oppose any legislation that discriminates against students based on immigration status. Take this opportunity to reaffirm your commitment to guaranteeing free public education to all children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Megan. Next is Angelina Tomas. Please state your name and county of residence.
Thank you. Um, good evening. My name is Angelina Tomas and I live in Knox County. I am a student at Fulton High School and I will be the first in my family to pursue education after graduating. I love playing soccer and drawing. My favorite subject in school is math. And I like to write. My favorite colors are red and blue. And I plan to go to beauty school. I dream of opening my own beauty salon. I am the daughter of a single mother who does everything in her power to take care of me and my six siblings daily. My mom never went to school or received an education. That was a right she was day nighting to opportunity to, to explore as I chill. They never showed her how to read or write. So growing up, she would tell me about the importance of going to school, about the many doors it can open for my family. My education means everything. It gives meaning to sacrifice my mom had to make. I am grateful to be a part of this country. I am also thankful for receiving a free public education because I know how hard it will be for my mom otherwise. I am thankful for my teacher for helping me dream big and for molding a student into the future of this country. Taking away our right to a free public education will, will have a big impact on our education and life, leaving our dream to stand on nothing but air. But luckily, you can take a step into the right direction. When the time comes for you to choose how you want to support students this week, think of me, think of my community and all the other kids who are still dreaming. In this season especially, I ask God to always protect us and guide us to that we may all be good people. Because He sent us here with a purpose to help one other not to step on its other. Thank you. God bless you all.
Thank you, Angelina. Next is Andres Francisco. If you would, please state your name and county of residence. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, hello, my name is Andres Francisco. I live in Knox County. I graduated from high, Fulton High School. During high school, I lost my dad to COVID-19. His passing changed everything for our family, my mom, my two brothers. And I were left to figure out, live without him. My dad, he was a judge of us to work hard, to never give up and to fight our dreams. Losing him left whole damn, nothing will fail. After his past, I head to school, work and then same time to help my family was hard and same days I feel like I called to, my education has always been important to my family, my dad including and thanks to my teachers and to public education. He was able to find hope and a way forward. Today, I'm working towards my, owing my own business and I have created a path for my younger brothers to follow that help them learn, grow and having the hope for the future. I want you to understand something. Denying that chill education because of their immigration status is not only unjust, but that cut dreamers short is taking away the chance to learn, to grow and to become someone in this world, to take away all hope. But because you can do something about, I ask you or school board remember the faces behind to decisions to children who are in the classroom. Today, that ones who are afraid to not make their, their tomorrow in your hands are thousands of dreamers. Please choose children first. Thank you.
Caroline Mann. Please state your name and county of residence.
Hi, Caroline Mann. I live in Knox County, District Four. I'm the parent of three Knox County Schools alumni and I'm just, I had prepared remarks, but I can't really, I can't share them now because you've heard students ask for your help and I would just reiterate that request. Please stand up, help the students in our community, help all the children in our community. I'm so encouraged that there's so many of us here tonight because I believe so strongly in the value of public school and public education as the foundation of a strong community. And Dr. Ryswick, you said earlier that you were proud of the school leaders, the communities and the families who came together to keep the school strong. That's what's on the table now. So I ask you again to reaffirm the commitment to educate all students, all children in our community because that's what builds a strong community, state, country and future for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Maurizio Conti. Please state your name and county of residence.
My name is Maurizio Conti. I live in Knox County. And I'm a, I'm a former immigrant or I'm a U.S. citizen now. And my child, my grandchildren went through the public school in Knoxville. They are Americans, not only because they have a passport, but because they grew up in, in America and they went to school in America. And they cherish their roots, immigrant roots, but they are American. And I'm sure most of you have roots somewhere else and you cherish them. In fact, I think we could make a poll, but I think that probably everybody, most people in this room are between three, four, max five generation from being, from having immigrant Nevertheless, we have to talk about these things. There are some people that have problems with immigration. And, and, and those are the people I would like to address tonight because I think that if you think that there is a problem in immigration, the best solution is integration of the children of the immigrants. In this country, a full, good education so they can cherish the value as an American and love America. And so, thank you very much and let's go in that direction.
Thank you. Ashley Chambers. Please state your name and county of residence.
My name is Ashley Chambers. I live in Knox County. I teach in District Two. I have been an elementary school teacher for eight years, six of those I have spent teaching in Knox County Schools. At the start of my career, I taught third grade for four years and now I'm in the fourth year of teaching English language learners in Knox County Schools. Over the years of my teaching, I have worked with a wide variety of different students who are learning to speak English as their second, third, sometimes even fourth language. Although these students and their personalities have been diverse, all of these children had the same thing in common. Every single one of them was a positive asset to their classroom and the school building as a whole. The past four years have been an amazing experience teaching students at all elementary school grade levels to improve their English skills. Some students come to my classroom brand-new to English where others come almost fully bilingual already. Out of all of the KCS families I have had the joy of working with, my ELL students' families have been some of the most involved parents in their students' educations and they treat myself and the staff in my building with the utmost highest levels of respect. Knowing this, it has been absolutely heartbreaking to witness the extreme shift my students have taken mentally in 2025 due to recent events in our country. Every year in August and September, the ELL teachers in KCS are required to ask our fourth and fifth grade students the same routine questions about their aspirations for their futures. Every year, our students have some of the most wonderful dreams of going to college and securing great jobs to help make a better life for themselves and their families. This school year, I went to ask these same routine questions and instead of getting the same replies I would normally get, I was met with comments like, "I just want to drop out of school so I can work to get money to feed my family." And comments equating to them feeling like they no longer have any hope of control over their future. This was very shocking to say the least, but what really broke me was when one of these same students turned to me at the end of our class period and asked me, "But Ms. Chambers, do you think one day I might be able to still do one of my dreams?" And I had to choke out a reply, "Yes, of course," with a straight and happy face, even though all I felt like doing was crying in that moment. By passing a legislative priority and resolution that takes a firm stance against TN, HB 793 and similar bills that permit discrimination against children based on immigration status, KCS is voting to foster the hopes and dreams of children. We would be choosing not to crush their hearts, but to uplift them and give them a shot at a beautiful life that they deserve. We would also be allowing these students to continue to be amazing classmates to their non-immigrant peers and continue to boost each other up to be as successful as possible in their academic careers. In these tense times in our nation's histories, KCS has the opportunity to be a light in the dark for these students when all some of them can see right now is darkness alone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Cadence Collins. Please state your name and county of residence.
Hello, Cadence Collins, District Six, Knox County. Today, I stand before you as a toddler mom. You might have seen her running around earlier today. Thank you, dada, for watching her. And a full-time theater nerd, theater nerd who is inspired by Wicked recently to speak about a fundamental truth, there's no place like home. Home is not just a physical space, it's a sanctuary where we feel safe, loved and nurtured. We want our schools to be a home, a sanctuary for our kids, but for many, the concept of home is challenging and difficult, especially now. And as Alphaba sings in Wicked for Good, "Why do I love this place that's never loved me, a place that seems to be devolving and even wanting to?" But Oz is more than just a place, it's a promise, an idea, and I want to help make it come true. In America, we are all promised the right of a free public education regardless of where we came from or how we came to be here. Our founding fathers were immigrants, my ancestors were too. We were the tired, poor and huddled masses yearning to breathe free. So I ask, is home simply where you were born or is home something more, an idea, a promise, a place to breathe free? Denying children a free public education does not only defy our Constitution, it strips children from the opportunity to grow, learn and contribute to their communities, to their homes, to America. Every child deserves access to a free public education, the comfort of knowing they have a home in Knox County Schools and the knowledge that they won't be discriminated against just for pursuing their constitutional right. And as Dorothy sings, "If happy little bluebirds fly beyond the rainbow, why, oh, why can't I?" A young child may not be able to fully intellectualize or articulate what discrimination feels like, but they will feel it, the feeling of not belonging, the feeling of being unworthy and the yearning to fly like the other birds over the rainbow. And if we allow these bills to become law, if we refuse to act, they will be left on the outside looking in saying, "Why, oh, why can't I?" And how will we answer? As we advocate for the rights of all children, let's stand united in our commitment to free public, public education for everyone. Let's create a home for learning where every child can thrive. Together, we can ensure that all children have a home in our schools filled with hope, opportunity and the promise of a better tomorrow. After all, there's no place like home. Thank you.
Thank you. Daria Turner. Please state your name and county of residence. She'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Superintendent Ryswick and members of Knox County Board of Education. I'm Daria Turner, President of Knox County Education Association. When I, when I introduced myself to you this summer, I shared that my presidency would be guided by three core values, standing in solidarity, lifting up the voices of those who too often unheard and building stronger, more modern connections. Tonight, I want to focus on the first two because they speak directly to our responsibility to protect every student's right to learn regardless of who they are and where they came for, came from. 1954, 1965, 1971, 1982. Each of these years marks a moment when our country moved closer to fulfilling its constitutional promise of equal protection under the law. In 1954, Brown v. Board of Education declared that separate is not equal. In 1965, South Carolina v. Katzenbach upheld the Voting Rights Act and rejected efforts to silent voices through discrimination. In 1971, Swan v. Charlotte Mecklenburg affirmed that the integrate, that integration wasn't just an ideal, it was an obligation. And in 1982, Plyer v. Doe ruled that states cannot deny children access to public education based on their immigration status because the cost to society of leaving children uneducated is far greater than any political gain. Each of these decisions reinforces a simple truth, there is no justifiable reason to discriminate against children. And yet, HB 793 and SB 836 challenged that truth. These Tennessee bills, these bills in the Tennessee General Assembly propose denying certain children access to public education, not based on their needs, their potential or their humanity, but based on their immigration status. That is not justice, that is not constitutional and that is not who we are in Knox County. One of our superintendent stated goals is success for all students, not some Not some students, not certain students, all students. Each member of this board took an oath to uphold Tennessee, uphold the Tennessee Constitution and pledged during your campaigns to do what is best for all students. We believe you mean that, and we're asking you to stand by it. Denying children the right to learn does not strengthen our schools or our communities. It weakens them, and it places us on the wrong side of both history and the law. 1954, 1965, 1972, 71, 1982. These years remind us that the progress, that progress is not passive. It takes courage, it takes principle, and it takes action. Let's add 2025 to that list. KCA urges the board to oppose HB 793 and SB 836 and reaffirm Knox County's unwavering commitment to educating all students. Thank you.
Thank you, Daria. Mary Lou Knite. Please state your name and county of residence. She'll have three minutes.
Mary Lou Knite. I live in Knox County, North Knox County. I've worked in West County, west part of county most of my career. I've retired from Knox County School System after serving 40 years as a teacher and administrator. I want to commend you, Mr. Superintendent, for your good report card. I'm very proud of you personally, and also very proud of this board and the staff of Knox County Schools at Central Office for your achievements because without your support, those principals and teachers cannot do their jobs the way you want, want them done and the way it should be done. From the time I started teaching and later when I became an administrator, my first priority was student safety, which has been mentioned earlier, so I won't go into that. So that is very important in our school environment, followed by the, the meeting of the needs of every student. At my schools, which were, in this case, Bearden Middle School and Bearden High School, we absorbed the student populations from Tyson and Beardsley when these schools were closed, and we were the first middle school to have an LRE class and to use the concept of inclusion with our special education students in the general population. At Bearden High School, as in all of our other high schools, but I only know about Bearden High School, we accepted and taught all students from different ethnic backgrounds and cultures, from different religions, from different races, with different abilities, including physically, mentally, and emotionally handicapped students. I have heard tonight and read that this board has been encouraged to be on the right side of history with regard to the issue of educating students who enter our schools. With that in mind, I want to remind all of us that we have faced difficult issues before, before: Integration, Title IX, educating handicapped children. Therefore, my purpose here is to encourage you to accept this challenge, an opportunity to do the right thing. It's very important that we do it in a timely manner. In the past, and some of those other issues, it took too many years and too much damage was done as a result of not making responsible decisions in a timely manner. Specifically, I'm requesting that on Thursday, December the 4th, you vote yes to pass the legislative priority. I thank you again for this time, and I want to commend these students for their comments tonight. I'm very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Rogelio Francisco. Please state your name and county of residence. She'll have three minutes.
Hey. My name is Rogelio Francisco. I live in Knox County. I recently graduated from Fulton High School, but when I first came to this country as a kid, the only language I was known was my native Mayan language, Akateko. I, a memory I carry with me is the day my dad enrolled me into a public school. I didn't know how to speak, read, or write English, but I was determined, and with the help of my teachers, their patience, and thanks to the public education, I was able to learn the language. I was able to communicate with others and create a long, lasting friendship and memories. During high school, I had my teacher by interpreting in all three languages, Akateko, Spanish, and English. This has made me, made me think about how much our school already depends on students and families to feel good when resources are limited. Like me, there are many childrens in our community who arrive at school ready to learn, but face barriers because of language, lack of support, or even fear that their education could be denied. Denying their right to education doesn't, doesn't just harm them, it affects entire family or communities and, and the future of the, of state or, and country. Public school exists to provide a free, quality education for all childrens. It is a promise to children like me and to every student who walks through school doors hoping for a safe, supportive environment. I believe in that promise, and you should protect that. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you. Camila Navarro Mata. Please state your name, county of residence.
Hi, everyone. My name is Camila Navarro Mata, and I'm from District One. I'm a proud Knoxvilleian and born and raised and went to Farragh High School. I'm here tonight because I care deeply about the future of our students, all students. I want to start with something personal. I grew up in this school system. I went through ESL. Even though I passed with As the entire time, I was surrounded by kids just like me. Kids learning English, working hard, and trying to find their place in a new environment. Many of those classmates are now in college, just like I am. We made it because public education was accessible and free to all of us, regardless of who we are and where we come from. And I know for a fact that if public school hadn't been accessible, our futures would have been cut short before they even started. I've seen that same potential in my family. My oldest brother, when he was undocumented, he went through the school system too. He worked incredibly hard, pushed himself, and became a shining example of what can happen when a child is given a chance. Because of the opportunities he received here, he went to graduate from UTK. His success story represents exactly what is possible when education remains open to every child regardless of who they are and where they come from. And I've seen the impact of school outside the classroom as well. I've spent multiple summers helping at camps and doing childcare. I've met kids who ran up to me excited to talk about what they learned in school, the books they're reading, and how proud they were to solve a math problem. When you're working with children, you don't see immigration status. You see potential, hope, excitement, and dreams they are eager to share. It honestly hurts to think that some of the same kids who trusted me, who told me their goals, could have the opportunity taken away from them. Public education is supposed to be a promise, a promise that every child deserves a chance to learn. Kicking out kids out of school simply based on who they are is wrong. These kids are already part of our community. They sit in our classrooms, eat in our cafeterias, join our sports teams, and share the same dreams as every other student. Some of them will grow up to be nurses, teachers, engineers, or community leaders, but only if we allow them the chance to learn. We cannot limit a child's future because of paperwork. We cannot strengthen our district by excluding the most vulnerable, and we cannot say we value education while pushing it out of reach for the people who need it the most. Tonight, I am asking you to stand against this bill, not out of politics, but out of compassion, fairness, and a belief that every child deserves an equal chance. When we invest in all students, our entire community becomes stronger. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anna Garlington. Anna, please state your name.
Hi, I'm Anna Platillero Garlington. I live in Knox County. Woo! I work as a Spanish interpreter in the court systems and in the schools. I serve also as a community liaison with Knoxville International's Network, otherwise known as KIN. KIN has the goal of having our international community members become like kinfolk, family. That's what we want. My husband and I are parents of four graduates of Hardin Valley Academy, and I'm thankful to be part of this group here tonight, enjoying the freedoms that we still share. As a Spanish interpreter, I have a unique view into many families from our Hispanic community who live right here in Knox County. Often, I hear stories that break my heart. As a parent, or sometimes both parents, and I are waiting for an IEP meeting, or a disciplinary hearing, or parent-teacher conferences. I'm always glad when our Spanish-speaking parents show up at these school meetings, especially now. Over the past few months, when deportations have escalated, how brave they are, how much they love their children! I was born in Spain. After my parents were married right here at First Presbyterian Church, my father was Spanish and my mother was a Knoxvilleian, redhead Knoxvilleian in Spain. We moved to Miami, where my father pastored a Cuban church during the Cuban crisis of the 60s. I grew up loving the Lord, my school, and loving my country, which as, as a child, I saw as open and welcoming to all the world. Today, I grieve for the many hurting children who are living in fear. Those stories that have been confided to me in our public schools are about parents, uncles, aunts, brothers, who have been deported, and how that is affecting their children, our students. Though we aren't addressing those issues tonight, I am adding my voice to ask that Knox County schools remain a safe and welcoming place for all children of Knox County. For so many children, the wonderful teachers, I attest to the schools here being amazing. And the wonderful teachers and staff of our schools provide so much more than academics: love, encouragement, a safe place, and order amidst the chaos happening all around them. Let's keep that up. Education for all. Thank you.
Thank you. John Tiro. If you would just put, state your name and county of residence. Thank you.
I'm John Tiro. I live in Knox County. And as a pastor, I spend a good bit of my time, week to week, reminding people of things they already know. A lot of which we learned in school, things like take your turn, be kind, be a friend. Tonight, I want to remind us all that America is an immigrant nation, that all our families, if we go back far enough, come from somewhere else. Some on foot, some in ships, some in planes, some willingly, some unwillingly. But there are no other Americans. Even First Nations people, if you go back to the geologic record, apparently walked across the Bering Strait on dry land back when the oceans were different shape. Which may be part of why they seem to remember better than a lot of the rest of us that this land is, is meant to be a gift, meant to be cherished and cared for and shared. Education, also a gift. And no matter how self-educated a person might be, no one learns to speak without other people, no one learns to be kind without other people, no one learns to be a friend. No one even learns the basic rules of how to speak to a school board without some basic instruction from the chair, and thank you for that. I mean, we're only having this moment because all of us received the gift of an education from somebody on, like, just English. And of course, the most obvious thing, especially to all of you who've devoted so much of your life to caring for kids through our schools, it, children are a gift, just meant to be cared for. So, thank you for the beautiful language of the resolution that, that's been put forward as you're thinking about your vote coming to Thursday and how the language might change. Please support free education for all children, and thank you for your work and your time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes public forum.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, and to all of our public forum speakers. Thank you for coming out tonight. Moving on to Board Four, we will start with you, Mr. Lee. Lee, it's actually, is it Lee?
It's Lee, yeah, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to say thank you again for everyone who was here and took the time to speak. Really inspiring, really inspiring. For the students, I think state testing's starting this week, so looking forward to that, but also not looking forward to that. But, um, that's pretty much all there is to it. We've got like one last hurdle before the end of this semester, and we're looking forward to getting to that nice, long winter break. But other than that, I do want to remind some people that this Saturday, Farragh, students at Farragh High School are hosting a Future Leaders Day where anyone, any middle schooler can come in and learn about all the different humanities disciplines that are being taught in high school, whether it's clubs, classes. I think we've got Youth in Government, Model UN, Mock Trial, all going to be there. And so, tonight's the last night to register, and if anyone would be interested, we would love to have you. Other than that, though, that concludes my comments.
Thank you. And finish strong. You're almost there this semester. Dr. Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you to all the administrators, teachers, and staff at the local schools and what they put in this semester as we go into the holiday season. And just thank them for every day showing up and doing what they do.
Thank you, Ms. Templeton.
Great. I want to thank everybody for coming out. That's a thing that we all appreciate. We appreciate emails. We appreciate the, all of our constituents reaching out. So, thank you for being here, for taking the time to do that. I also want to encourage all the students that are about to take midterms or finals, depending on how their schedule runs. We wish you the very best. Of course, layered on top, our choral concerts and holiday, just excitement and, I'm out of the adrenaline is rushing, and wish you the best holiday season and Happy New Year because we'll see you on the other side.
Thank you, Ms. Fontenot Ridley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to apologize to the speaker that I missed. I no longer have a teacher bladder, so I apologize. I want to thank all of the people who stood up and spoke out and shared their, their heart with us. I think it's important that people feel comfortable sharing what they're thinking, especially the students that came in and the teachers. I know sometimes it's a little bit daunting to get up in front of a, of the board and actually speak, so I appreciate you, and I encourage anybody that needs to speak to sign up. Like Ms. Templeton said, we welcome all communications with you all, so keep it coming. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Spight. Ms. Morgan. Ms. Henderson. Mr. Triplett.
A little longer one than normal for me, but just want to give a thank you to all of the families and the community in Powell. They have expressed, first of all, they love the teachers and the staff at Powell Elementary School. School, but have expressed some concerns about the facility, the portables, the age, the size, some of the difficulties of transitioning from the portables to the building and all of that. And while we have made some strides to improve some things, we got rid of the oldest portable and put some newer, a couple of newer ones in, we are well aware that is not a long-term or permanent or the best solution for the long term. Dr. Adams and I, as well as a number of folks on his team, have spent about a year and a half, we've been talking about this, he spent some time with the school building, looking at the facility and trying to figure out a solution. But want folks to know that we do hear you. Our plan, we've talked through a number of options, but we should get projections for the 25, or 26, 27 school year in January, and so we plan to bring a solution to this board in February to vote. So that's the plan. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Wright. All right. I just would like to weigh in and thank the district and partners in education for hosting principal for a day and inviting us all into their schools. And also to you, Dr. Reiswick, for our status in moving us forward. That was a great superintendent report tonight, so thank you, and thanks to all of our teachers and principals and everybody that is in the trenches every day doing the work, helping students to move our district forward. So thank you for that. Great Christmas present. And with that, we are adjourned.